This regular meeting of January 10th, 2020 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning environment. Roll call, please.
Bradley.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Prohaska.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sancy.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to move that portion of our agenda, just with the Roman numeral 10A, to be taken off the agenda at this time. And I believe, Ms. Hawkins, you're going to be explaining a little bit about that.
As you know, OSHA had some federal requirements around vaccine mandates with employers that had over 100 employees in their system. And so it was about vaccinations and about testing. And so we've been advised by our legal counsel at this time to not bring a policy forward to the Board until more information comes out and we can make sure that we have that policy be accurate according to what comes out of that mandate.
As you probably know, the Supreme Court heard about it, heard arguments on Fridays. We're waiting for something to come there. And then Iowa OSHA has also weighed in, as we understand. So we don't want to start and stop and make changes so it's easier just to table it for now and bring it back up every time we have more information.
Have a policy and have you rescind it and all those things. So we just ask that you table it for right now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we need a second to the motion to amend? If so, I'll do that.
Yes.
We do need a second.
A second, yes, the amendment.
To approve the agenda with the amendments.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment. Can we call the vote now?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, right? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the annual organizational meeting on December 13th, 2022, as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the annual organizational meeting on December 13th, 2021, as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, so we have some board salutes, I believe. A board salute goes out to Project Rooted this week for supporting the Rooted Box program for our students. This program works to educate children about healthy local foods and additional topics in relation to healthy bodies and minds. The pilot will start with first grade content leaders at nine schools this year and possibly expand to other grades in the future. Lessons will be taught during science and health one time a month. A farm-to-school grant will be used to help launch the program. So thanks to Project Rooted for introducing this and offering it to our students. Thanks, Ms. Jones.
I have a board salute. Our boards, this board salute goes to the Protectors Law Enforcement Motorcycle Club, Iowa Chapter, for its donation of winter clothing to our students who need it. This group of police officers raised money and collected items for the district to provide to students in need of them. We're thankful to their donations, and I'm sure the students who needed the warm clothing really appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Whitman.
I have a board salute. Many probably are aware of a program called LUMEN, social-emotional training, that's being accomplished in our district. I'm very excited about it, and so I'm delighted to give a board salute to the United Way of Dubuque area tri-states for its grant funding to support LUMEN social-emotional training for the district's paraprofessional staff. This funding was made available and secured through the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools, so we acknowledge Amy Unmatmak at the Foundation and all of her donors who make such funding possible. It was actually funded in the amount of $34,000 over the past two years, which has made this professional learning possible for this district-developed program to support our non-teaching staff, our paraprofessionals. So its impact has been felt across the district certainly, and LUMEN has become a living learning tool in how our staff practice self-care and in turn enhance our students' lives. So we give thanks to the United Way for its ongoing support of not only the district, but to the nonprofit organizations throughout the entire Dubuque area. It's a great program.
Thank you. So next is the visitor's forum.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So any persons wishing to address the Board can do so at this time. You can come up to the podium, state your name, your connection to the district, and share whatever you'd like. You have three minutes. Thank you.
All right. Hi, I'm Cindy Mueller. I'm a grandmother of three students at Sageville School, and I did run for the school board at the last election. I want to congratulate Katie Jones on winning that seat. All right, there is great controversy over the issue of wearing masks in the Dubuque community schools, and the Board has heard extensive arguments from parents, teachers, students, nurses, and other members of our community last fall. Some of the arguments made show that there can be serious consequences from wearing masks, including but not limited to the difficulty of people with asthma to breathe and the need for increased medication, the difficulty of hearing impaired teachers and students to communicate, and issues of brain health to some students that experience increased anxiety from wearing masks. All students can have their education adversely affected by wearing masks due to the loss of seeing facial expressions and the distractions and limited vision that can come from wearing masks. Of course, arguments were made on the other side of the issue as well, and a person's choice to wear a mask should in no way be inhibited. But after much discussion and research, Jim Prohaska made a proposal last fall that masks should only be required when there is a 3% positivity rate for COVID, and this mask requirement would be on an individual building basis. And when that rate falls below 3%, then the mask requirement is removed. There's also a provision for medical, brain health, and religious exemptions. This policy was approved by the Board, and although neither side is fully satisfied, it has worked for the last three months and allowed the Board to move forward and focus on other issues. So therefore, I encourage you, as a Board, to keep the current mask policy in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Wayne Kinnicker. I live within the Dubuque Community School District. So last Tuesday night, we had the opportunity to listen to the Board discuss or the Subcommittee discuss the coronavirus data. That data was shared and is available every day for people to continually monitor. We learned in our statistics class back in the day, or by life in general, to form a valid conclusion, we need to weed out the outliers and look at the main data. As Stan indicated last Tuesday night, his group put together the best data that they could, and it has come to us in a very usable format. He also mentioned at least twice that on the scale on some of the graphs, we're altered to make it easier to see. The significance of that is, looking at those graphs, we have to keep in mind that a 1% increase was then represented as a 10% increase. So a bump became a spike, okay, in that discussion. We also heard about the mask on-again issue or concerns. In reality, of the 19 schools in the Dubuque Community School District, only seven of them have gone past the 3% as of Tuesday. I understand that one more was included late last week to make it eight. But in reference to the seven that we learned about last week, only three of those encountered more than one segment of mask-wearing. So in other words, only three of them could have been dealing with an on-again, off-again issue. Of those three, only one had less than two days' gap in that issue. The one that didn't was Bryant School, which is the smallest, I believe, the smallest school in the district, and therefore, a small number of incidents result in a pretty significant increase. Jim, as was mentioned before, Jim made a very, made a motion, a cautious motion, and set the threshold at 3%. We saw data that night that represented other school districts setting it at five. I believe there was one even at seven. With that in mind, a compromise was reached. We had a toe hold. Now we see people pushing farther based on, not the data, but based on the input from a small number of people because they didn't get what they wanted. Anderson pointed out the importance of balance in these issues and using the facts. It makes sense to me to leave the mandate as-is. In fact, it would make more sense to let people start coming back together and working on some significant issues rather than repeatedly going over and over and hearing things that are happening with coronavirus.
Wayne, your time is up. Sorry, three minutes have passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I approach the podium, mine clocks at 3:20. I'd like to request that 20 seconds on front.
I'm known as Susan. I have four successful graduates from the district. Barreling through Google searches regarding some of the most common questions regarding coronavirus, for example, what percentage of infected and vaccinated people achieves herd immunity, and so on down the list, demonstrates beyond my reasonable doubt that the medical community, the federal government, and all the way down to the locals don't have a clue what is, what they are speaking to. The searches tout nothing concrete, couched disclaimers, and experts believe. Each is looking to the other for recommendations and backtracking when contrary evidence surfaces and claiming the guidelines recommended were not their own, just from other reliable sources. A spontaneous comment was made at the January 4 Subcommittee meeting during back-and-forth discussion on masking stating this has become about power, fully affected with a clinch fist and quickly amended to include ascribed power to both sides of the debate. Yes, it is about power. Time to restore that power to the people. We live in an information age. We all know how to use the Internet. Masking and herd immunity guidelines change with the wind. With Fauci himself commenting, quote, "People were getting confused and thinking we're never going to get the infection down until you reach this mystical level of herd immunity," whatever that number is, end quote. Sounds conclusive, right? At one point, he said 60 to 70%, now 70 to 90% vaccinations are needed. You all discussed last week about determining an end date to this. I say that time has come. Evolutionary biologists suggest this is unlikely to go away. It is a coronavirus, generally understood to be around since 5,000 B.C. Thank you, Sherlock's. The COVID Act Now website has Dubuque County at 66.8% vaccination rate. After two-plus years of this, every living being knows to stay home when sick, cover your cough, wash your hands infrequently, test if you so desire, wipe down surfaces, and if you choose to, wear a mask and get a vaccine. Take your pick of protective measures, not to mention the abundance of therapeutics available that we are vehemently argued with on which ones are exactly right for us. That along with all the other methods of protecting oneself are personal choices. This Board is charged with developing an education program in accordance with the Constitution and laws of the State of Iowa. As elected at-large members, you are charged with conducting the affairs of the corporation. My observation of recent events points to education as in decreasing value and sometimes negative utility. Teaching children to conform to violations of their human rights, like face masks lacking informed consent, is a wickedness. In addition to the fear and anxiety needlessly perpetuated upon them. Brain health, anyone? Thank you, Anderson. Should this Board take up the notion of mandating anything forward? Do it from your power center, not looking to others for recommendations, opinions, and then hide behind someone else. Own it, make your factual statements, and face what falls out, face what fallout ensues. About how we gather real numbers, how about we gather real numbers specific to the student enrollment and employees of the district, says this school district is all that you are charged with overseeing. It is your microcosm. Publish website results giving parents real data to make informed daily decisions for their children, specifically the breakdown between testing positive and negative infections, largely a farce in my opinion and by omission of joke from Ms. Jones at the previous meeting. Everyone needs to own their actions for choices made. Listening to the rhetoric about who is going to control another in this debate is like observing a bad marriage. I say enough personal choices, the answer. Coerced compliance and forced exclusion are crimes against humanity. You are charged with the education welfare of the children in this district. The rest is up to the parents and counsel with their medical care providers. Since there are so many recommendations going around, my is, we set the medical mandates out and return to what the issues in the classroom. May the grace of God's peace and love be with you. Thank you.
What is her name?
Can you state your last name? Sorry, we didn't get it.
My name is Susan. You may call me Silver Susan.
Nobody else coming forward? Got somebody?
Good evening, members of the school board. Superintendent Rygans, my name is Joseph Delaney. I'm a senior at Dubuque Senior. It's great to see a lot of you again. I thank all of you for listening to my remarks. So as I specified in a letter to you earlier or last week, a number of my students and I are still significantly worried about COVID-19. As you all know, the level of community transmission of COVID-19 in Dubuque County as defined by CDC is high. They have specified that all citizens in counties at this level should wear a mask in all indoor public settings regardless of vaccination status. An even more concerning figure is the number of COVID cases in Dubuque County, which rose by approximately 80% from January 1st to January 8th, according to the CDC. In addition, hospitalizations as well as ICU occupancy have also increased in this county. CDC has specific guidance for K-12 schools on the issue regarding masks and COVID-19. They state that, quote, "CDC recommends that all students K-12 wear masks in indoor public settings regardless of vaccination status." Now, I understand that it's completely possible that COVID-19 isn't going away anytime soon, but our district must do everything in its power to protect its personnel now, like students like me. And while many speculate as the truth, as to the truth of the facts I've shared, I assure you they are concrete and accurate. Before moving forward, I do want to sincerely thank all of you for your openness and your ability to let the public weigh their own opinions on this issue and for Superintendent Rygans and your team for doing everything you can to protect students like me in the district. I greatly appreciate it. I understand there's concern regarding parents' right to choose whether their child wears a mask at school, but masks have proven to be effective because they stop your virus particles from going to others. So a parent's choice to allow their child not to wear a mask at school is a, is a choice that not only puts their child at risk, but the child, children around them, as well as their teachers, as well as the administrators in their building, at risk. Therefore, I'm asking you to adopt a universal mask mandate once again for all district buildings. If I may, I have a motion that I've laid out that describes exactly what I'm asking. If you would pass that down. I hope you'll consider my remarks and this motion in a state of mind that's free of bias, looking solely on the facts and the safety of our district. I will respectfully continue to advocate for this issue until it no longer poses a significant threat to myself and those around me, as the fact suggests it truly does. I thank you again for allowing me this time, and I look forward to seeing you all soon.
I'm a resident of the City of Dubuque. I'd like to give some facts tonight because I'd like to have you readdress your mask issue and your ending of your mask. Children have a 99.998% chance of surviving coronavirus. We have been wearing masks for approximately two years. That's 720-plus days of mask-wearing, and nothing has changed. 20 minutes of mask-wearing, and it is soaked. Take off your glasses, blow on it, you get moisture on it. You wear a mask for 20 minutes, and it's already soaked. There is no mask that has, the holes in the mask are so large that a virus particle will go through any mask, let alone those blue masks that come from China. There's, a virus can go right through those. However, bacteria particles are trapped in the mask, so you are constantly breathing in your own bacteria. There are many dentists that have already said that they're having trouble with people's mouths because you're breathing in bacteria. In the 1915 epidemic of the flu, the problem was bacterial pneumonia from people wearing masks. More people died from bacterial pneumonia. Even Fauci, back in March something, said masks would do any good, but it's become a control tactic. Some of the things that can happen when you wear a mask, it causes substantial adverse physiological and psychological effects. They can include shortness of breath, increased acidity and toxicity of your body, the activation of fear and stress. It causes immunosuppression response, fatigue, headaches, decline in cognitive performance. It causes a predisposition for viral and bacterial infections, chronic stress, and There was a study in the UK of 25,000 school-aged children. 53% had an increase in headaches. 50% had difficulty concentrating. 37% had an increase in drowsiness or fatigue, and more than a third of them had sleep issues. It's time to put the kids' health and education first, and that includes disposing of all mask mandates. Don't follow the crowd. Let the crowd follow you. Margaret Thatcher.
I am, I have one student in the Dubuque Community Schools and two in Holy Family. Last Tuesday, I was at the committee meeting here, and it was noted that our county is in the red category. I want to know how that applies to change in anything with a mask policy? In my opinion, it doesn't. As an elected board by community members that you serve, please make it make sense. Before you make any changes that make this policy more stringent than it already is, show us, who you serve, the numbers and exact data that is relevant to the cause, and show us where you find that data as well. Being in the red category has little or nothing to do with how many people are hospitalized due specifically to coronavirus or how many children are ill, and irrelevant to deciding if increasing mask usage will make any difference specifically in our Dubuque community schools. I want the data of the numbers of children and staff in Dubuque community schools only and separate vaccinated from unvaccinated that have died solely to coronavirus, been hospitalized solely to coronavirus, symptomatic or asymptomatic with a positive test. How many contact traced led to subsequent positive person, and if either of those people were symptomatic. Additionally, data needs to show how masks will certifiably change anything in our schools. If you cannot provide that information, none of us are informed enough to make an independent informed choice for our community, the increase, to increase the standards. The burden is on you to prove that this is reasonable and necessary to impose greater restrictions from the standard norm of no masks. Nancy, you like to say that you don't want to take risks and look to maximum safety with this. Have you considered the risks of learning delays due to putting unproven masks on children? With masks, we'll be caught that a second grader is saying some ping rather than something, or dis rather than this. Have you considered the risks for the young person that has been raped and wearing masks triggers PTSD? Have you considered the person who is emotionally abused, essentially had their voice to speak taken away, now masked and made again to feel like they don't have a voice? Do you know what it is like to be claustrophobic? And do you know what it is like to have a panic attack when you have a mask on? Have you considered the risk and maximum safety of the child that you can't see their expression when something is wrong and needs help? First, make it make sense with actual relevant data, please. The second thing that I want to say is that at Tuesday's education programs meeting, there was talk of new curriculum. Anderson, I appreciate, I appreciate you asking if the public would have a chance to see this new curriculum before a decision is made. For the sake of transparency, why not make it available for public to see what our tax dollars are going to purchase before it is purchased? For me, questions arise due to the materials being only considered for the positive things that they have to offer, not any faults that they may have. That was what the person presenting it had said. That in itself doesn't make sense that, in the way that if, it has all the bells and whistles that you're looking for, but it has a few bad words or inappropriate material, it's still going to be bought. That doesn't make sense to me. So just on that, food for thought. Please let us see it first before making a purchase. Thank you.
As I've spoke before, these masking and mandate decisions made by the seven board members of this district affect all people differently. These debates and the decisions made by this Board will never be completely accurate or fair for all parties involved. The data is flawed, and the guidelines are always changing, and there has never been straightforward, accurate, or concise data on this coronavirus issue. No guidance, guideline, or mandate is correct for, is the correct choice for all people. This cannot be a one-size-fits-all decision. This is where personal choice comes into play as the best and only option for all medical, mental, religious, and personal health decisions. These decisions must be made by each individual person or family that best suits their health needs. These decisions are personal, and they need to be made on an individual basis and not by this district. Please stop the madness of this debate. We have heard many, many countless debates on these masking and mandate issues. This district has spent countless hours, days, weeks, months compiling data, reading, researching, and trying to find the best workable solution. Coronavirus is here to stay. On January 7th, 2022, Governor Reynolds applauded Commissioner Roberts of Iowa OSHA as Iowa will not adopt federal OSHA vaccine mandate standards. These mandates strip personal freedoms and choice of healthcare decisions while these mandates ignore the constitutional rights afforded to all Americans. I too have many questions that the community parents and employees deserve to know the answers in the data analysis. Please provide all of us your end date to these recommendations. I will end with this comment. This is a board of community citizens who are professional people representing the Dubuque school, staff, children, and parents of this district, and I thank you for what you have done on this board. I have no doubt that we all want what's in the best interest of everyone involved. However, I would ask that personal running joke comments be kept out of this meeting. Ms. Jones, running joke comment on Tuesday at the committee meeting about COVID and the new testing site that just opened, that if you didn't have COVID when you went into that testing site, you would have COVID when you left the testing site. Please refrain from these jokes, personal opinions, and comments during these meetings as this is not a joking matter nor a data-proven fact. Comments like this undermine the integrity and validity of any proposed policies Comments like this undermine the integrity and validity of any proposed policies and decisions coming from this board. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the board at this time?
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve those items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any board member who wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next is facilities and support services. That was my last time, last week, as the chair of that committee, and Lisa's going to be taking over as chair for the next year, so if you wouldn't mind, Lisa guiding us through these.
Yes, I'm gonna list all the motions, and starting with, we had a Boy Scout, I'm sorry, I don't have his name, I apologize for that.
Right, first name is Wyatt.
Wyatt was his first name.
Wyatt presented to us that for his Eagle Scout, he wanted to, approvals that he would donate and construct three handicapped accessible picnic tables for the garden area at Eleanor Roosevelt Middle School for the Boy Scout Troop 69. I'd like to make a motion for that.
Okay. A second.
Oh, we need a second.
You need to read the motion.
Yeah.
Make the formal motion.
I just, I move the Board of Education approve the donation of three handicapped accessible picnic tables for the garden area at Eleanor Roosevelt Middle School from Boy Scout Troop 69.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation of three handicapped accessible picnic tables for the garden area at Eleanor Roosevelt Middle School from Boy Scout Troop 69. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the request to the School Budget Review Committee for modified supplemental amount and supplemental aid for 2022-2023 dropout prevention program in the amount of $4,875,960, based on the formula and match for expenditures necessary to implement the 2022 and 2023 at-risk and dropout prevention program plans.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the request to the School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, for the modified supplemental amount and supplemental aid for the 2022-2023 dropout prevention program in the amount of $4,875,960, based on the formula and match for expenditures necessary to implement the 2022-2023 at-risk and dropout prevention program plans. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
If I could jump in for two seconds?
Yeah.
We were able to, the young man doing the picnic tables for the Boy Scout Troop 69 is Wyatt Brantscum. I also wanted his name to be on the record as doing that project.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thanks.
All right, next motion. I move the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans and specifications for a con, contract and estimate, estimate total of cost for the central kitchen mechanical replacement project, and set the date and time and location as February 7th, 2022 at 4:30 at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorization, the advertisement for the competitive bids.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan specifications form of contract and estimate of total cost for the central kitchen mechanical replacement project, and set the time, date, and location as February 7th, 2022 at 4:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I had a question about this, this is probably for Kevin. Do any of our SRF funds apply to funding this at all, or is this being, our, a lot of our food service was involved in the?
No, Jim, we'll be using couple of funds for this project.
Couple of funds. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan specifications form of contract and estimated total cost for the Hempstead High School Kitchen Freezer Replacement Project, and set the date, time, and location as February 7th, 2022 at 4:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorization, the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan specifications form of contract and estimate of total cost for the Hempstead High School Kitchen Freezer Replacement Project, and set the time, date, and location as February 7th, 2022 at 4:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Next, I move the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. Kevin, you have something to present?
Couple of comments on the report. First of all, I'd like to bring your attention to, on page 55 of the document, your board packet, we're going to talk a little bit about general fund revenue, and also on page 60, general fund expenses. Revenue, you see in the packet, our budget is about 50% completed for the year. As you know, we are six months into our fiscal year, so also at 50%, so those two numbers correspond very well together, both at 50%. The general fund expenditures, if you were to add the year-to-date expenditures of about $55.4 million plus the encumbrances of 78.3, total of $133.7. Those numbers are currently a little bit lower than we projected for the year, so I look at that in a positive aspect that hopefully we could continue to remain near or close to what we had projected for the fiscal year spending. Now, of course, in the second six months of the year, the district historically spent more dollars than we did in the first six, but again, I remain optimistic that we will stay close to what we had projected. Finally, on page 60, the sales tax fund, you will see in the budget, it shows a deficit of $8.6 million. That is simply because the project for senior phase three, or phase two, the whole encumbrance for the whole project is listed there. We expect to spend about $19 million of the dollars on that project in later fiscal years, so really, if you were to take that $19 million out, we would not have a deficit. So those are the only things I wanted to bring to your attention. Anyone have any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. I think we jumped ahead a little bit where we had a second for that motion.
Okay, so.
So can someone second that, then?
You want me to restate it?
No, I second it. Thank you, Tammy. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. Thanks for Kevin providing us some input on that. Is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now we have the Ed Programs and Policy Committee report from Mr. Sancy.
Yep, thank you. So that was my last month leading the Ed Program Committee, and next month it will be Ms. Nancy. So a few things that I just want to highlight that was pretty exciting for our team. Number one, we did talk about curriculum that our teachers are looking to purchase that aligns with the core standards, and from listening to our staff, it's like buying a new car for them. And so all the teachers and administrators are real excited next week to actually have the physical books in hand to look at, and just reminder to all the board members that they did invite us for three days, just pick a day that you want to come look at, the purchase yourself, and I believe they're, they will have input from students potentially, and hopefully also for parents to have an opportunity to look at the curriculum itself. So it's really exciting that our teachers are going to purchase a new vehicle. Also, we talked about STEM activities from high school all the way down. We have an amazing staff who's looking to infuse STEM at each level, from robotics to coding, working with our community partners. As many of the board colleagues know, STEM is something that's dear to my heart, and I'm looking forward to seeing how we can continue to push a lot of our kids in that space that they choose to go into the STEM activities. Project Rooted, we're super excited to partner with them to ensure that our students have healthy meals in front of them, learning where the food comes from, and also for me, as I talked about, how to dispose of the box once we're done with it, so recycling is also dear to my heart. And then, as many of you who are here today, we did have a lot of conversations related to COVID. What do we do with it? When do we stop? How much more do we need to do? And from the conversation, we'll have just the topic itself on the agenda moving forward. Until we have a kind of a better idea of the data that we want to use to make whatever decisions we're going to do moving forward, and I continue to encourage my colleagues to consider both the physical and mental aspect as we continue to look at the data, and continue to ask the citizens, continue to let us know what your thoughts are. We know we haven't heard from every single voice, and your voice does matter to each and every single one of us, and so those are the things we talked about as a group.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Sancy. So that brings us to new business. We're not talking about the first one, so remove that, but.
I move the Board of Education approve the 2021-2022 board committees as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 2021-2022 board committees as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and authorize the president and the secretary to sign on behalf of the Board of Education.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the proclamation honoring Martin Luther King Jr., and authorize the president and the secretary to sign on behalf of the board. Should I read that at this point? Yes. So this is the proclamation. Whereas on Sunday, January 16th, 2022, our community will celebrate the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., beginning with a virtual award ceremony recognizing students participating in the annual NAACP Martin Luther King Tribute Contest. And whereas on Monday, January 17th, the annual Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration will be held virtually at 7:30 AM with a theme of catalyst for changing, moving toward action. And whereas in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., the King Center is urging people to reject all forms of hatred, bigotry, and prejudice, while pledging to do everything in their capacity to make America and the world a place where equality, justice, and freedom and peace will grow and flourish. And whereas we invite all citizens to join in keeping his dream alive by joining in the celebrations, dedicating their lives to the creating, to creating the community of Dr. King's dream, and pledging a nonviolent way of life in their dealings with all people. Now therefore, I, Kate Parks, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim January 16th and 17th, 2022, as days of great celebration in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., signed on this day, 10th day of January, 2022. So we need to vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Are there any board member or administrative issues that are not on the agenda?
No administrative issues.
Anything else?
Hey, what, just curious, what, when was that open house again for, when the curriculum materials are going to be, is that January 20th?
I believe that's what I wrote down. There's three days.
Lisa, do you have those dates?
Yes, it's the 19th, 20th.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other issues to discuss today, we are adjourned.